Board of County Commissioners now in session. We'll begin with prayer followed by the pledge. Commissioner Jones, if you'll leave us some prayer, please.
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for this day that you have given to us. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be granted wisdom, discernment, Lord, and discretion today. We ask all these that in your name and from your hand today, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin with approval of the minutes.
Stay moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masti, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Next will be payment of county bills.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Next will be presentation, employee resolution of appreciation.
Commissioners, you see, I'm sorry, good morning. See, I have two people there, but unfortunately, Mr. Key could not make it this morning, so we will defer that presentation to some other date. But, we're lucky enough to have Mr. Tommy Sadler here. And, if you don't mind, sir, would you approach the podium? I'm going to read to you the board's resolution of appreciation. And it begins, "Whereas Tommy Sadler began his employment over twenty-nine years ago with Franklin County, whereas Tommy Sadler was hired as a labor trainee at the landfill on March 7th, 1989." "Whereas during Tommy Sadler's employment with Franklin County, Mr. Sadler held four different titles, with the most recent position being working foreman with the road department. And whereas Mr. Tommy Sadler is described as a dependable, hard-working, loyal employee, going above and beyond the job requirements. And whereas Tommy Sadler is devoted to his family, that includes his wife of twenty-two years, Kathy, his four children, eight grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners conveys its most sincere expression of gratitude to Tommy Sadler for his many years of service to Franklin County. This resolution adopted the sixth day of March, 2018."
Congratulations.
Commissioner, I'll ask the department head, Howard Neighbors, to present this resolution to Tommy and probably say a few words himself.
Yeah, Tommy's a very good employee. You know, hired him on, which I know he was, and you know, anytime you called Tommy, at night, day, it didn't matter. If that phone rung three times, I mean, he answered it. And we're gonna miss him out there, so. But you sure you don't want to stay a couple more years down the road?
Oh, thanks, sir.
I do, but I don't. It's bittersweet.
Yeah.
It's bittersweet.
Well, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
For photograph, Tom must come up and stand aside so that everybody can get a picture with Howard giving you the plaque and that you're off.
Well, that'd be good.
We'll get you on the front page.
We gotta stand back.
Front page.
Now come on over here, guys.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Tom.
Congratulations.
You got me?
You're in the middle, Mr. Lord.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just enjoy your retirement. You've earned it.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Spade.
No, I'm not coming out.
I would like to say one thing.
Oh, yeah.
I feel like we got the best board that I've ever served, or we have. And I tell you, when y'all put Mr. Neighbors in as superintendent, he's done an excellent job. But not only is he good at his job, he's got job knowledge, he's firm, but he's fair. And don't put up no bull, he just does what he's supposed to do. And I got a compliment to go with that. I really appreciate working for him, and I appreciate that y'all are in for the county. Franklin County been good. And I love this county, that's why I'm here. And I ain't going nowhere.
Congratulations. Next on the agenda would be Department Director's report, Mr. Howard Neighbors, Superintendent of Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners. That, uh, just got a couple items on our working foreman that we run for two weeks. We got one, and that's a little midget so far, which the deadline's tomorrow at five o'clock. And another item is, we got a few call-ins on the yellow lines and the white lines that's on a lot of our roads, it's faded out. So, I talked to Michael yesterday about it, so I don't know, maybe we can work on somehow, you know, when Roberts and Roberts is paving down here or something, get some of their, you know, spraying people to try to mark some of our roads, or, you know, have the board wants to do it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Michael, one of the things that you could do is if any of the Commissioners have any money in their gas tax money, because I know I've got a little bit, so if you've got any in District Two, you know, I'm more than glad for you to use the gas tax money that I have there, so.
Mine too. You got any in three?
What's that?
Did you get any complaints out of three?
No, not three, I got basically sixty-seven.
Yeah.
C thirty, which is down in the miles, we call it here. And a lot of our side roads, I think Moses Road is one of them.
I don't know what's in the account, but, you know, the new paving we done, we had that new striping put on, so it'll last a lot longer than the old paint that we used to use. But you're gonna have to prioritize Howard, what roads.
Yes, sir.
Ride the roads and see which ones are the worst.
Right.
But I'm sure there's not a lot of money in the gas tax right now, because we just did a road paving project, but.
And we could do a little bit of, you know, at the time, you know, that's a start, so.
Right, and prioritize the roads that really, really needs it, and work our way from there, I think would be the best suggestion.
Well, I did, I had some stripes not too long ago. In fact, this past summer, I thought I had some stripes down sixty-seven.
Okay.
But if they still complain, I don't know what.
I think it's from the prison north is one big thing, you know, where they're bringing people back in at night, back off to prison late at night. A bit raining, you know.
I had it done by law.
That was one of Mark's projects for, I can't remember.
But you need to look at that too, Howard, because I was gonna say the same thing. We got sixty-seven, or a lot of it fixing to be redone, and they'll re-strip it at that time, so there's no need to do it this month, and then next month, they repay the road and re-strip it again. So you have to look exactly what's going on, and then prioritize from there.
Okay, we do that.
Anything else for the board?
I got a question. Do we have to wait, turn it to next meeting to vote for Mitch to go in tomorrow, is the deadline at five o'clock? Can we make a motion, if nobody signs up, he could go ahead and move over?
The motion would not be necessary. Commissioner Masti, the role of the board is to authorize the advertising of a position. Once you authorize that, move forward, and the department head makes the decision, once that timeline, that deadline has passed.
Okay.
He doesn't have to wait. He's got the authority in your personnel rules to make that decision, once y'all authorize him to hire somebody.
Okay.
Then he'll just come back and report to the next meeting, what decision he's doing.
Yeah. Okay.
What else do you?
Yeah, I got one more item on one of our inmate trucks we got, which is, ain't maybe five years old, four years old, and we've had a lot of trouble with it. And we just had to spend seven thousand dollars on it about three weeks ago, and it's back in the shop again. So, and what it is, is that new smart control pump stuff they put on these trucks, and it's been up there a lot more times than that, but the warranty's covered, but the last time, the warranty didn't cover. So we continue on having a problem with this truck. I mean, I'm not budgeting, you know, just keep paying them people, we're gonna have to, you know, make a move on something, so.
I have a question. Wouldn't it be cheaper for you to get a Ford or Ford, like the city uses, to go back and forth to pick inmates, and just leave them trucks parked in storm season till you need them?
Yes, sir.
Because I'm over there, and they making two and three trips, that big diesel truck, and they could go with one tank of gas almost all week while they filling up every day.
And you could save money, you know, that way.
Yeah.
Would it be cheaper for you to get another truck, or park it, or what?
Yeah, them trucks, but I'm practically a new truck, you know, excuse me, so.
Well, that what you need to do, that way?
Yeah, but I think, what the same thing that just tore up, I think is against the warranty, should cover it this time, but, you know, two years down the road, if you had the same problem, you spend a seven, eight thousand dollars every year or two, trying to keep that truck going.
Can you get them on the lease also?
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know if we get them on the lease or not, but I think the cheaper way we do, you know, is like Commissioner Williams said, is if we could get a couple four-door pickup trucks and kind of leave them parked, because they do help a lot during a storm or something, and doing shoulder work, so.
Well, I make a motion, you check into it, and come back another note.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. What kind of truck is it?
It's an International, which used to be one top-of-the-line truck, you know, but now, just, all you know are trucks, they got all that smart, which you probably know about that sort of smart control stuff, that you gotta put that liquid fluid in, and it flushes itself out, and so, and it's become a, you know, major problem.
A major problem.
Any other comments? We do have a motion, a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Anything else, Howard, from the board?
I would just like to say thank you, Howard. They, uh, they've, just so the rest of the board will know, we've done all but two of the access alleyways on the island. We had two of them, the people have pulled up the stakes, so we're getting back out to restake them and finish it up, and it looks really good.
Like it. Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Howard. Next will be Mr. Fonda Davis, solid waste and record.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have two items on my report here that need board's action. The first item is public shooting range. I'm requesting the board to permanently close the shooting range located in East Point behind the Humane Society. There's a safety risk to the landfill staff, as well as county inmates at the Frank County Sheriff Office. Parking recreation staff have reported that during the cleanup, their routine cleanup, they are finding TVs and other items that have been hauled to the range as targets. For liability reasons and safety concerns, I feel we need to move forward with closing that.
So moved. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
Yeah. What we're gonna do about the range, then?
I asked, uh, I asked Mr. Howard Neighbors to stick around for Fonda's report here. I was called last week, you know, if you remember, the board authorized Howard to help him out with the shooting range west of Appalachia Cola. They called last week and wanted me to get with Mr. Howard to see when he would have time to go out there and help them finish that up. But staff actually needs to write the city of Appalachia a letter, asking that the, when we get, if Mr. Howard, when he gets time to go out there and help finish it up, that it needs to be opened up to the public. I think that's what they told us when they come here and ask for help, and we've helped them, and now they need just, he said, I talked to Howard a while ago, he said probably two or three days, they could finish it up. But with the closing of this landfill, if the board votes to close it, then we need to help move forward and get that other range opened up in the west of Appalachia Cola, so the public will have a place to go and sight their rifles in, and it'll be a lot safer than where the shooting range behind the Humane Society is. It's been an issue for a while, because the animals inside the Humane Society, when gunfire's going off, they get nervous and start raising sand, and this ain't the first time this issue has come up. And it's right next to the jail, and right behind the Humane Society's building there, so. If we're all gonna close it, then we need to direct staff to write a letter to the city of Appalachia, and let's get the other range, which we've helped some, and try to get it opened up to the public. So, if I could get somebody to make a motion on that. But we do have a motion on closing the range first. Any other discussion on the closing of the range?
I have a question, all right. Gary Hunt is gonna try to build one in Carabao, somewhere over there, and they'll have one on that side, you know, to go to.
Any other comments from the board? We do have a motion, a second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. If we could get somebody to make a motion, direct the staff to get with the city of Appalachia Cola on the other range.
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masti, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries also.
Okay. Next item is the roll-off boxes container. I'm requesting board's approval to purchase off state, be it contract, three roll-off boxes containers. They were used to hold household waste from the Frank County Central Landfield Transfer Station to a proper disposal facility. What we have here is that the boxes that left now belongs to Waste Management, and they, the same shape the compactor was in. They got wore out, and what we agreed to is that, once we damaged the boxes, up to a certain amount, we would replace. But that new compactor's doing an excellent job, and it's packing the garbage, and afraid that they gonna blow them walls out on the old containers, and we'll be responsible. So I'm asking now that we could purchase our own.
So moved. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
Yeah, you got money to buy.
Which, this would be part of initial during budget talk where we had money set aside.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. One thing, Howard, while you're still here, you asked me a while ago, did we want to finish up, I think we need to finish up the soccer field first, and if we, then we can move out there for a couple days and help them on that shooting range.
We can do it.
We get the soccer field done, and we can get some grass growing, and we can move on.
How much rain we gonna get? I know we got rain coming, probably the seed in the night, so, you know, we don't get a whole lot of rain, and we can start on it maybe in the morning, for soccer field.
Okay, I appreciate you sticking around for this discussion, so we all on the same page. Anything else? Any of the board members have anything for Mr. Davis?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Davis, is it possible for us, I know we're using, uh, county golf carts, UTVs, whatever, for the, or I understand that we're using those for the parade this weekend, that Kent Boys and Girls Parade. Is there any way we can get any kind of signage for those? I know people know who we are, but everybody that's in the parade is getting something saying who they are, and we're just kind of in a golf cart riding along.
Good, yes, there's no problem. Board of County, Frank County Board of County Commissioners?
That'd be fine, yeah.
If we're gonna have two of them, we probably need four signs for one for each side.
Okay.
And then I'll bring some wire ties, and we'll just put them on there temporarily.
Okay.
Sound good.
We ain't never had one before.
Okay.
And we can keep the signs and put them up somewhere for next year, you know.
They don't, uh, they ain't got no way to stick on them?
I don't think so.
On golf carts?
I'll bring some plastic ties, we'll put them on there.
So you need both ATV?
Yes.
Right, and what time?
Line up at nine, nine forty-five.
Okay.
Where would these things be at? They use that Pam's house?
Yep.
Is that where we do it?
Yep.
I'll get there early and get the signs put on.
And then we'll take them off, and we'll hold them for y'all for a minute.
Okay. Anything else from Mr. Davis while he's here at the board? Thank you, Fonda.
All right, thank you all.
Next will be Ms. Tress filling in for Pam Brunel, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Pam had a doctor's appointment today, so that's why she's not here today. So I've got a couple action items, a couple aren't on the report. First is gonna be the opening, the request for qualifications on contractual services.
So moved.
Okay, there are nine of them here, and all, there is no money, this is a question for qualification, so we're gonna open and read out the title and the, um, name, uh, so, first one is just here. The first one is, they're not in any, not in alphabetical order, Quality Engineering Surveying LLC, Quality Engineering Surveying from Port Vincent, Louisiana. Again, this is a generalized consultant that's gonna assist emergency management on lots of aspects of hurricane recovery, so.
Where are they?
I'm sorry?
I said they come from a long way.
Yeah, yeah, well, there are nine of them, so. These are all heavy, too, there's a lot of paper in here. The next one is Plexos Group. Plexos, P-L-E-X-O-S, Plexos Group, from Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Third one. Is Whewler, Whewler Emergency Management Consulting, Whewler Emergency Management, N-S-W-H-E-E-L-E-R. Whewler from Mariana, Florida. This is from Title Basin Governmental Consulting, Title Basin, T-I-Z-A-L, Title Basin. And they are from... What about that? His, uh, area code's three-one-five, whatever that is. I don't know where three-one-five is. Oh, oh, Unico, New York, okay. Title Basin Governmental Consulting, Unico, New York. This one is DSI Group, DSI Group, from Tallahassee, Florida. And there's a bunch of popcorn peanuts in here, so we're gonna let the peanuts stay in the box.
They're gonna feed us?
Yeah, well, if you got styrofoam elephants, we'll still fill them with styrofoam peanuts. This one is Galt Group, G-A-L-T, Galt Group, from Wellington, Florida. Well, that's where Tiger Wood lives.
Really?
Wellington, San Juan, Orlando, there he is. Okay, the next one is CDR Maguire, C-D-R Maguire, M-A-G-U-I-R-E, from Miami, Florida. And this one is Metric Engineering, Metric, M-E-T-R-I-C, Metric Engineering, from... Seriously? Well, somewhere. It's not essential, I read out the location, but it's nice to know where they're from. Well, here, Metric's responsible and closes office located at Jenks Avenue, Panama City. So they always have an office in Panama City, I don't know if it's headquarters, but it says the responsible office. And the last one is H-2O Partners, H-2O Partners, from Austin, Texas. H-2O from Austin, Texas.
Tress, good luck. Thank you.
The review committee made up emergency management people, and you all come back.
Yeah, and then one of his talks.
Make a motion, we turn it over to the review committee.
Well, a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Masti, turn it over to review committee. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries.
Yeah, who been doing this before?
We've had different ones, CDR Maguire was one of ours from last year, and we've used the management experts, so right now, we just have extended our contracts until we could actually go back out for bids, and like the third time we've done it, so.
Where the money company work from?
Where's what?
Where they, where they move?
Um, usually Tallahassee, I know CDR said they were from Miami, but they're actually, there's a home base in Tallahassee.
Okay. Well, part of this, Commissioners, is that the state of Florida has restructured the way they handle emergency management, which is causing all of the governments and counties to restructure all of them. So we had to basically do a wider search with maybe a bigger net to get...
Small business.
A business that's compliant with everything that FEMA's requiring, but it's been a big change, and so one of the times we had to re-adapt, to be honest with you, there was some concern that the applicants, the state of Florida had a consultant that they got rid of, and then there was a bunch of confusion about who was allowed to respond, so we had to kind of go through, work with the state of Florida to go through all that. So that required this last third announcement that we're doing today, and gotten such a great response, so we think we've done it properly.
Yes.
But the, the, the other thing I want to tell you, although this is all, is these people will be getting money based upon FEMA hurricane recovery responses, you probably won't hear a word out of them, or see their names anywhere until we have a hurricane.
Yeah.
Because they are, they're funded based upon reimbursements that FEMA allows. So maybe if we select these people, and if we don't have a hurricane in 2018, you may forget that they're part of the team, but they are part of the team. And I, so is it a three-year contract, we think, three or five years? Is it set here?
Two.
It's just two years?
Two-year, two contract. Okay, and the next thing I have for action items is, we just got their contracts in for our hurricane loss mitigation program for, from our contractors, so we need to have, request the board to approve the signing of the contracts.
Pleasure, the board.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Who won the contract?
Well, we actually only had one bidder that actually was our contractor. I sent it out to any contractor that was registered in Franklin County, like actually physically sent that bill out, the advertisement out, and we only got the one response back. So, but our shutter guy is the one from Hartfordville, that's, he's the one that puts up our hurricane signs every year, so he got, he has ordered the shutter contract, and the general contractor will do all the roofing and the other aspects of the program.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries.
And I have one more item, is we, in the previous years when we've done this hurricane loss program, we have waived the permit fee for these projects, and I'm requesting that the board waive the permit fee at this time for those projects.
Same move?
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masti, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries.
And that's all I have for y'all today.
Anything from Ms. Tress from the board? Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you.
Next will be Mr. Eric Lowstrand.
Mr. Lowstrand, Commissioners, Mr. Lowstrand contacted me yesterday evening, said he's in a training class, he's teaching and being trained, and ran over, ran over yesterday evening into this morning, he didn't realize that would happen, and that's where he is. If you have any questions, let me know, and I'll get him to give you a call later on during the week.
Okay. Next on the agenda will be public comments. Please limit your time to three minutes, Mr. Wrong will keep track of the time. Any public comments, come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning, I'm Bert Bolt, and I'm from Alligator Point. If, I'd like to turn your attention this morning to these documents that I've placed in front of you, there's two of them. One is the talking points that I'm gonna be reinforcing this morning, along with the support background information for those documents here. One of the treasures we have here in Franklin County, in my opinion, is our medical services system. It is a Franklin County treasure, and then it's anchored by Weems Memorial Hospital, and it is a clear recognition that we have a lot of challenges, financially and otherwise, within Weems Memorial Hospital, but we still have a huge asset here. I realize that the county is continuing to look at risk-sharing partnerships to facilitate what's going on here. What I'm saying is that I'd like us to turn the light on in the kitchen again, and say that we should be looking at some direction and guidance as we drive the county toward management of its healthcare services. And this is, this consulting company that I've researched and have brought to your attention today is willing to do that. Weems Memorial Hospital has a huge volume of patients that leave this county and go to other facilities for services. The county, the commission has done an admirable job in working to identify financially sustainable issues here in our county, and yet, our healthcare... And yet, our healthcare issues are so incredibly complex, and as laypeople, many times we're disadvantaged as to, uh, what we're dealing with. Uh, these large corporations that are interested in looking at our healthcare delivery system and how they can help us, I welcome. But I also feel like we should have the ability to, to oversee the services, not run the hospital or the county medical services. We have oversight to, to look at what are the patterns that we're gonna be dealing with if we're working with a consultant such as this. I wanted to ask you to, uh, keep in mind how important it is to work with Weems Memorial Hospital in keeping it financially and making it financially sustainable and keeping it financially sta- sustainable. We should ask, how do we optimize our healthcare delivery network to improve the healthcare of this community? No doubt, Weems Memorial will be a critical component to that answer, as will other healthcare providers and services here in the community. The Board has heard from several consultants in the past, mostly representing hospital operators or others with a financial interest in the future as Weems Memorial. What I'm proposing is that the Board should have the benefit of an independent advisor, not only to serve as our community advocates in the ongoing negotiations regarding Weems Memorial Hospital, but also to help us tackle some of the larger issues that will help us as a community, ensure our healthcare delivery network is appropriately designed and drives improvement. I've reached out to a firm with extensive experience in healthcare systems and ambulatory care planning and physician practice development, and it's called Health Group West.
Sir, you're, need to wrap it up, you're over.
Okay. Um, I'd like you to look at the whole situation. There's no cost or obligation for this group to come in, and I'd like to talk with the county administrator further about bringing this group in and facilitating it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, for the record, my name is George Prode. I'm here representing the East Point Volunteer Fire Department. And I'm here today, uh, to invite you all to come and have dinner at our place, uh, at the seventeenth annual East Point Volunteer Fire Department Charity Rib Cookoff. And that will be Saturday, March the seventeenth. Uh, we're real excited about this. We've got some prize money going out this year, so we're hoping for some increased, uh, participation. And, uh, it'd be great to see a couple of county commissioners cooking for that prize. But it'd be great to see you guys out there anyway, and, um, and that's basically what I'm here for. But I do have a question regarding something else. The, the, um, range closure, is that immediately, uh, does that do immediate, or are you gonna schedule that closing and notify the public about it?
Uh, I took it as being immediate, George.
Okay.
This, this health and safety, and it's been going on for years.
Yes, sir.
And we're trying to get this one opened up here, as you heard us talk about earlier, and Commissioner Mast said they're trying to open one up on the other end of the county.
Right.
Try to get where the public can have someplace to go to shoot.
I've been following that. I, I, my concern, and it is a safety issue, uh, there's no doubt about it. Um, a wide-open range in, in the public area is a safety issue. But, um, my, my concern is that, you know, people are gonna start sighting their weapons in on the side of the road somewhere or in residential areas, um, so we just need to do something to get that other one open. And I appreciate what the Commission is doing for that. But thanks, guys. Come out and eat with us on the seventeenth.
You know we will. Any other public comment?
Just one, just one comment to George. To George, make sure that one of them hoghide before I get over there and buy some.
Uh, I don't know what you're talking about, Madam Commissioner. We do have dragon skins.
Yeah, I know, but I call them hoghide.
Right. Well, well, I have to correct Doug all the time, too, but look at the sign that says dragon skins, you know, it kind of goes in the fire thing.
You're not, you're not gonna correct Doug.
No, no. That, that's right. That's right, but we're very thankful to have him, I'll tell you.
Oh, yeah.
Our Board is, uh, is, we have an amazing Board that makes sure that we have what we need to get the job done.
And I, and I saw in, in your little notice that y'all were giving the, the thousand dollars this year to the winner of the rib contest.
Thousand dollars for first place, seven fifty for second.
Oh, my goodness.
Five hundred for third, and two fifty for fourth. And, um, so that's a, that's a first, and, uh, you know, the Board just blindsided me with that. That's, I'm like, I, I wanna quit so I can enter and cook.
I'm on it.
But, you know, I'll rejoin the week after, but, but no, um, I, I think that's gonna, you know, we've got a lot of advertising going on based to the TDC, uh, in part, and, um...
I, I, I know, as Commissioners, we go, and I enjoy it.
Absolutely.
I've seen a lot of cooker, people cooking this round.
Yeah.
I guarantee you, I hope so anyway.
We're gonna have a lot more than we can have with that kind of money.
Come on, man.
What, what's the price of the liar's contest?
Um, a, a nice little trophy and the bragging rights for the rest of the year.
Oh, I got a few.
Right. Right, you know, that's kind of an improper thing. We, we don't, um, the, the public judges that the liar's contest, it's always a fun. Um, it has to be G-rated, you know, as we're a family event.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna get video for Roy's.
Right.
And do that.
Okay. But guys, if, if you have any more questions, just call me, you know, holler at me, hey, you, and, uh, or go to our website if you want an entry form, eastpointvfd.com, and you can download webs, uh, the, uh, entry form and the rules from there, so.
Thank you for coming in today.
Thanks for the time, guys.
Any other public comment? There being no further public comment, we'll move on to Ms. Kim Bodine, Chris Source, Gus Coast.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for having me today. Um, we put forward a modification to our plan. It's actually a formality. The state requires us to do this. Um, as they continue to roll out the federal law that governs most of what we do and that provides a lot of the money for what we do, there are milestones that we have to meet. And so the plan has some changes to it. None of them are substantial. Uh, they've expanded the, um, labor market information that was in the plan. I believe the plan was provided to your attorney to look through as well. But I'll entertain any questions about it. You've already approved the MOUs and the IFAs, the infrastructure funding agreements that are, have to be attachments to the plan to go to the state. Hopefully, we won't have to modify it again for four years. However, I have a feeling that they'll find some reason for us to modify it before it's not.
Any questions for the Board, to, uh, Ms. Kim? Pleasure, the Board, on request, approval of the service plan?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in today. Next will be Mr. Nate McKinley. I skipped trying to pronounce the name, Engineering Incorporated, and you can introduce yourself. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Nate McKinley. I'm here representing Gordamaller Engineering. Uh, we're a civil engineering firm located in Panama City Beach. Uh, we've been established there since two thousand two. Um, Michael and I have worked on, uh, getting me here on the agenda today to introduce, uh, myself and our firm to the county and to the Commissioners. I believe in the agenda. You have, uh, a short, uh, portfolio. I just wanted to, uh, highlight a couple of key topics, uh, for y'all on this. Um, Gordamaller's a multi-service firm. Um, there's a tab section here called Professional Services. Uh, we specialize in transportation, engineering design, CEI, and construction management, all sorts of environmental permitting, uh, public utility planning, uh, multiple, yeah, utility contracts, potable water, wastewater, storm water, mining, uh, commercial mining solutions, commercial development. Um, our primary clients are the Florida Department of Transportation and local surrounding cities and counties. Um, we have multiple, uh, large design contracts with the Florida DOT, as well as multiple continuing service contracts with Bay County, City of Panama City, and City of Panama City Beach. One thing I did just want to point out real quick is there is a map in here, a reference map, um, that just kind of shows the area that we, we cover. We have one office with eleven employees, and we handle pretty much, uh, all five of the northwest Florida counties. And, uh, this is about as far southeast as we'll go, uh, with our services. We don't want to, you know, really expand beyond our reach. Um, but like I said, I just wanted to, uh, present ourself to you guys and give you an opportunity to look through, uh, our marketing portfolio and our packet, let you know that we're gonna be pursuing the engineering services opportunities that you guys have in Franklin County, and offer up any questions you might have for me.
Any questions, the Board members? There being no questions from the Board, we do appreciate you coming in this morning and, and making your presentation.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Ms. Deborah Belcher, please come forward. You'll be next on the agenda.
Well, um, thank you for the, the time to let you know that we're ready to award funds for the last house in the CDBG grant. We, um, I don't have an exact figure because the owner and contractor are negotiating a couple of minor changes to actually reduce the, uh, the bid amount. And that is so that they can keep the total award under twenty-five thousand dollars, which keeps their CDBG loan at five years instead of seven. Um, so I would like to, um, have you authorize, um, funds for James and Janice Jackson to sign a contract and have their dock stance and recording fees paid up to a maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars total.
Pleasure, the Board.
So moved. That the last one?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
Yeah, did we get any more money this year?
No, sir, we cannot apply until this grant's closed, and this one, we have, the reason I'm presenting it today instead of two weeks from now, you know, when everything is ironed out, is so we can move along. Uh, we have a May eighth at, uh, deadline for closing the grant, and, um, so we're on track to do that. And then the next cycle has not been announced, um, but DEO's tentative plan is that it will open this summer.
Okay, but you're gonna put in for it, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other comments from the Board members, from Mr. Deborah? Being none, thank you for coming in this morning.
Thank you very much.
Oh, we didn't vote on it. We do have a motion and a second, I'm sorry. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next would be Ms. Marsha Johnson, Clerk of Court.
Chairman, I don't have a report this morning.
Thank you. Uh, the Board recessed five minutes.